Good afternoon. Sorry we're running a little bit, a little bit late, but I think we've got three of us in the room. Mr. Manager, why don't we begin because we've got a larger table than we typically have? Why don't we begin with some quick introductions around the room? That way, the room is familiar. We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Hey there. All right, Ms. Manager?
Yes, sir. I'll start the introductions. I'm Rick Fernandez, City Manager.
Lou Shally, City Attorney.
I'm Jim Cook, City Treasurer Clerk.
Wayne Tetter, Assistant City Manager of Development Services and Economic Vitality. You will have Chris Edwards, who is with the Planning Department with the Economic Development for the city, coming shortly.
Michael Parker, Director of Housing and Community Human Services.
Michael Delio, Chief of Police.
Cynthia Barber, Assistant City Manager of Community Engagement and Safety.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Well, don't we introduce ourselves?
Why not? Yes. Sure. You wanna introduce? No.
Mayor Gillum.
Yes.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, there it is. May pro tem. All right, so listen, I wanna welcome everybody to this, this first target issue meeting of the, of the year. Today's meeting is going to be dedicated to discussing the Southside area comprehensive report has been worked on and pulled together by not only Chris Edwards, but a real team of folks here at the city, as well as the volunteer input that we received from the urban planning institute. And so, we're extremely appreciative of this data. And, Mr. Manager, thank you for getting this meeting, getting this meeting scheduled. I'll turn it over maybe to you for introduction or ship. Okay. Actually, before we begin the presentation, we do have 30 minutes allocated during this meeting for citizen input. And so, I haven't received any. Treasurer Clerk, have you received?
I have not received.
All right. If there are any persons who are here in the, in the Assembly that is interested in giving comments, speaking, you've got three minutes per person to do so. Just wave at me, and we'll acknowledge you. Is there anyone who has any comments to make? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, pursuant to your direction received at the October 14, 2015 City Commission Meeting, this agenda item provides a Southside area comprehensive report. The item provides summaries highlighting area demographics, general capital improvement projects, and programs that have been funded, are funded, and planned for future implementation. Wayne Tetter will introduce the item, and Mr. Edwards will provide the report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Commissioners, when I was sitting in the back of the room and this assignment was thrown out, I believe it was Commissioner Miller asked if the Planning Department could assemble the various things that are going on in the Southern Strategy area. I said, "No problem." And I think the deadline we were trying to meet was December. But as we started peeling back the onion, and when Chris started pulling this information together, I have to say, I was absolutely amazed at the efforts that have been led by you all, as well as other people throughout our community, to try to make a difference in our Southern Strategy area. With that, we have a very lengthy presentation, and we do apologize, but I think at the end of this presentation, you will have a very good understanding of maybe not everything that's going on in the Southern Strategy area, but a very big portion of the activities that have occurred to make a difference in the Southern Strategy area. Additionally, we may have some questions at the end of this presentation. We have, if you see the folks here at the table and immediately behind me, all of these folks have had input in some way or another of trying to lead the efforts that you have been directing. And so, if there's questions to be asked, we hope to have the staff here to answer those questions. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris, and just let him walk through the information for you.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and Mr. Manager, and other appointed officials. Thank you for this privilege and opportunity to come before you and to provide you this presentation. Without further ado, we'll, we'll get right into it.
Just picking it up. Picking it up from the other side. Okay, we need some help.
This afternoon, Commissioners, we're gonna take the opportunity to kind of define the Southside. Southside has been synonymous with many different things, and so, we wanna take the time to just kind of really outline what we're, what we're looking at from a geographical standpoint. Basically, the Southside has many different layers. It certainly has the different neighborhoods in it. We've called out just a few neighborhoods. The South City Neighborhood, the Appalachia Ridge area, Providence, Bond, Tuskegee, et cetera, are inclusive in this particular area. This really isn't a regular-shaped polygon, once you see it in the next slide, but it includes the Urban Land Institute, South City Study Area, a portion of the Greater Frenchtown Southside CRA, which many of you serve on, and the portion of the Promise Zone, the FAMU Campus Master Plan, the FSU Campus Master Plan, particularly their Southwest Campus area, and of course, a portion of the Multimodal Transportation District. This just gives you a general overview without any layers or intricacies on it, just a general, irregular polygon for you to kind of know where we're, our bearings are geographically. This one just kind of outlines the ULI South City Study Area that was recently conducted. The, as you recall, the technical assistance panel came and provided a two-day study on that particular area, was inclusive of the South City Neighborhood, and also the South Monroe, South Adams corridor. The next, of course, is very familiar territory there with the Greater Frenchtown Southside CRA. Certainly, within that, you have Providence and other neighborhoods within there. South City has a portion of the CRA currently. Areas along the Wallace Street area in South City, of course, includes the South Monroe, South Adams corridor. Within that correlates to the investment plan within that particular zone. And we'll talk about that a little bit later in detail about the CRA. The next slide, of course, is our Promise, or is also known as the Opportunity Zone, and the general goals within that particular Promise Zone. If you recall, were to reduce violent crime, promote private investment, increase educational opportunities, improve residential involvement, improve health and wellness, and improve the quality of existing housing, and encourage development of market-rate housing at some point. In other words, encouraging more mixed-use development within the near future. And this just gives you a snapshot of the area in which encompasses the FAMU Master Campus, Campus Master Plan.
One of the things I could add to that, we're all aware of the efforts that FAMU has made to try to get their presence along Monroe Street. So I think working with FAMU to try to help them realize that goal in the future is something we're, we're definitely gonna need to work with them to achieve that goal.
And, and then, next slide will be the FSU. It's FSU's master plan, and that is the Southwest Campus, which mostly consists of the Innovation Park. Then we have the well-known MMTD, Multimodal Transportation District. And you can see its correlation to the Southern Strategy area, obviously not just in that area. And I won't be remiss if I did not further elaborate that the previous slides with the Promise Zone, the CRA, also encompass areas outside of that boundary, as you well know. The next slide is a snapshot at the U.S. EPA Brownfields area. As you recall, Commissioners, in October 2015, you approved an assessment grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency for a $400,000 grant. The then-EPA department submitted that grant, I believe, last month. We, in an interim, met with some of the area business owners and property owners in the area to talk about the ramifications of that grant, and we had some participation, not a resounding crowd, but we had some input to that. Did have one business owner who came and said that they may potentially opt out of that particular area for their own reasoning. And so, with this grant, the opportunity for cleanup and/or perceived contamination petroleum-based or hazardous waste material. And the second part of what you approved was the attempt to go after a State of Florida designation for the actual brownfield itself, and within that particular corridor of the South Monroe, South Adams area.
And in that area, what we're seeing is a lot of folks starting to come to growth management and planning to, to look at development scenarios in that corridor. One thing that we're very aware of with the initiatives that you are approving and moving forward, reimbursement of contamination issues can range anywhere from 50% of the cost to 100% of the cost. So we're working with the developers as, as they come in to provide them that opportunity to clean up and make sure redevelopment can occur the way we're anticipating along that corridor.
Could I ask you something? Where did this come from, this contamination?
The, just the historical land uses, there's a varying degree of types of things, cleaners, things like that.
Petroleum.
Yes. Yeah, it's a wide, wide variation of uses.
And this slide just basically is a conglomeration of what we just kind of went through, just to kind of show you the correlation of how everything fits. You can see a lot of overlap among the different areas, and, or obviously inclusive in that is the master plans for the two institutions there, FAMU and FSU. The primary goals that were initially established in the Southern Strategy area during its inception in the early 2000s was to promote quality land development, to increase population growth, incentivize retention and expansion of business and employment opportunities, and also to attain an income-mix area to encourage economic growth. Those were the three primary goals established in the exception of the SSA. Now, we're gonna segue into the demographics portion of our presentation. This kind of just gives you a snapshot of different general demographics on the particular area. There is a margin of error with some of the statistics on this. On average, probably 45% plus or minus some, some numbers in there, but this kind of gives you a general snapshot of where we are. The population for this area has grown. There has been, since 2000, there has been up to 35,619. That, excuse me, to 2015 is 35,143. The annual rate of increase is about .27%, and for the city, it's about 2.37%. For the county, it's about 2.19%, and that's just general population. The businesses in the area, the total number of businesses is just a little over 1,300. About, total for the county is about 13,879. And then, for total employees in this particular area, you're looking at about a little over 18,000, and as opposed to the entire area, which is closer to about 180,000.
So what does that mean?
Basically, you have, you have a variation between the SSA as far as...
Significant.
Yes, sir.
And if you look at the population growth between the rest of the city and the county as compared, not to mention the demographics, over the last 40 years, I mean, clearly, whatever we've been doing has not been terribly successful. I mean, I'm being frank here. This is the first I've seen this, but based upon what I read in the agenda item, these numbers are just really quite frightening. So anyways, I'm, I'm letting you know, beginning to let you know where I'm coming from here. Whatever we've been doing clearly has not been as effective as we needed to be.
Yes, sir. The, the next slide is just giving you a kind of a decade-by-decade, over a 30-year period, of where things have gone. This is like the Bieber version, and that's with the University of Florida, their, their research institution. But we're looking at just over 35,000. In the city, it's about 200,000, is projected for 2020. And then, for the county, it's about 300,000. Looking at the unemployment rate, the unemployment rate, as in the SSA as it is today, as of 2010 census data, is about 18%. The, as of 2010, and for the county, now, we know that those numbers have adjusted, is 8%. So we're still looking at that margin of error within these numbers, as you see. Families with children under 18 had it about 1%. You have about 80% in the SSA, you have about 40% as a whole for the whole area, Tallahassee, Leon County, as of 2010. And then, of course, families below poverty, you have it actually going up to about 40% right now, and then going down to about 15% for the area as a whole. The median family income for the whole area is actually down, up, and then, of course, the median family income for the SSA area is going down. Other interesting statistic there is the developed residential property values between 2003, 2014. As many of you know, there was a boom period in that timeframe, so we saw something, we saw them come much closer in value. We actually started to see the SSA value trending down for a period, starting to see a slight uptick, very, very marginal, but it's a slight uptick there for that. And then, for the whole Leon, Tallahassee area, it's actually going up. And then, this next slide, Commissioners, is very telling. There is a significant amount of aging housing stock in this entire area. The majority, as you can tell, the green kind of gives you an indication that you're seeing more of a newer housing stock going further south. A lot of the neighborhoods themselves are very historic in nature, so you have a lot of homes that are older there, built in the 50s to 60s on average, maybe even earlier. And you can see some, some burnt orange in there that indicate much older housing and within that particular area.
And Commissioners, if you recall, at your retreat, you made housing one of your topics that you wanted to discuss. In March 10th, we will bring back a workshop item dealing with housing issues, and I'm sure dealing with that aging housing stock would be a topic that would be a point of discussion for us to make.
The next slide, Commissioners, just really kind of captures some of the major housing development that we've had in the area. There are two primary, one, both of them that we were involved with was the Homefront Project. That was about $2.4 million, involved about 53 bedrooms at the multifamily unit there off of Stuckey. You can kind of see that in the fuchsia. And then, of course, the lime green shows you the medical commons development that was more single-family and involved a health facility.
And medical, medical commons was what year?
That was...
Medical commons would have been about, around 2000, approximately, 2004, between 2000 and 2002. We, just to get, we acquired the property, we, we negotiated with the Health Department, and they, give them a portion of the property to build a new health facility, and then we developed a single-family residential development on the balance.
Next slide, Commissioners, kind of just gives you a recap. If you recall, in the spring of last year, about March sometime, we had a meeting at the Bethel AME Church in the Southside, and that was centered around the Promise Zone application. We had submitted the application in December of 2014, and we're getting feedback and some additional input from the community as a whole. We had over 200 people show up. If you recall, Village Square helped us to facilitate that event. The primary concerns that came out of that, what we, what was called the Southside Community Dialogue, was jobs and education, housing, neighborhood services, public infrastructure, which obviously includes what's in parentheses, sidewalks, roads, stormwater, what have you on the public infrastructure side, as well as health and wellness, and then, of course, public safety. Those were their primary concerns lifted up from that particular meeting, from the majority of the folks that attended that meeting. From a public safety standpoint, and our efforts to try to respond and continue to engage...
Quick question, 'cause I don't remember. Did we get, of the folks that attended, substantial number, did we get any kind of qualitative data on, and I know we don't typically like asking people for their income and things like that, but it'd be interesting if we do it again, to get a feel for who's actually there, to make sure, and I'm not suggesting they weren't the right folks to be talking, but to make sure we're not missing anybody. I think that would be important to know in the future, 'cause if we're gonna be making major decisions based upon meaning like that, I should like to be convinced that it's representative of the entire area.
Absolutely. And we can do that, Commissioner. That was not done, of course, at that meeting. What we have done from a public safety standpoint is what has been done traditionally. However, there's been some, some new programs that have been created. As you can see a listing there, we've had our COPS program in place, we've had the Gang Response Unit. More recently, you know that we've had this Gun Violence Council of volunteers who've been participating with that process with the chief. We've had, from a kind of a preparedness-type standpoint, we've had a lot of emergency management workshops. That's been very helpful to the community, particularly fire prevention. The initiative, Where's the Beep? If you recall, that, that initiative that was conducted by our fire department was widespread, obviously, throughout the city. However, in this area particularly, was, was well-received. And then, of course, we had our Neighborhood Watch. The TPD engaged in numerous, and has engaged over the years, in numerous neighborhood engagement and education-type events throughout the Southside area. The newest initiative that we can recall from the summer of last year, I think where I was out there, I know, in nighttime in, in South City, was the Neighbors on the Block, and then, of course, the Operation Safe Neighborhoods. So that was the other activities. And that's just a snapshot of some of the things that we've been doing. I know that TPD is, the Community Relations Division has been very active in the area.
Chris, could I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, nothing has page numbers, and I know that's difficult.
Yes, ma'am.
And so on. But on about, Commissioners, on about page five of our agenda item, there's a list of all that TPD has done in the last 12 months, or in the last year, basically, like last year. And over 15 in one year, 15 special events and a special focus that was, that was placed in the area. So I just wanted to get that on the record, because our folks are working hard to try to address this.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Miller, you're, you're right. My concern, and it's, and I'm, you're probably gonna hear me over the next hour or so refer back to several times this whole community school concept, and it has to do with long-term commitment. In other words, these things that were done, are we still doing them? And have we committed to doing them next year, and the year after, and the year after? Because to go in and do something for a month or two months, and then it goes away, there's, first of all, the chances of long-term success are diminished. And then, there's the confidence on the part of the folks that live there that we're gonna continue to follow through. So whatever we do, I'd certainly like us to consider that long-term commitment, that we're gonna keep doing this.
And as we develop our conversation, I think that ought to basically be a criteria that we address. I mean, we shouldn't start things we can't finish.
Correct.
And the example I would, I would give is the Neighborhood Renaissance Partnership, which I've always thought was just an absolutely phenomenal program, but we just couldn't continue it. And, and then, it comes up again, you know, in our, in our paperwork. So I think, thank you for pointing that out. I think that's very important.
The only comment I'll make about continuing, because in meeting with the chief in Parks and Rec, one of the things that I said at the outset of the meeting is that, certainly not me, and I imagine not any of you are committed to failed projects.
Correct.
So if we try something, we roll it out, we don't get the results that we need, it's not working the way that we anticipate, let's incentivize the staff and us to fail out loud, to try new things, but if it doesn't work, you know, go back and retool.
I think that's why we're here today.
Agreed. But also, you know, we're jumping around here, and this has to do with the CNRP. The house at Appalachia Ridge, part of that also was an evolution of the use of so many as having our own devices. What was wonderful about that house was the Technology Center.
Right.
When it first opened, because there wasn't that kind of technology available in the area. And then, as time went by, a lot of our young people, in addition to others, started to have the technology, and so, the interest in the Technology Center waned. But that doesn't mean there weren't other things we couldn't do there, and we...
We still have the property.
Probably should have been quicker to do that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next slide involves our housing efforts, just kind of really just highlighting, I think we've kind of segwayed into that earlier regarding the home, the major housing developments. But there have been numerous housing efforts in the Southside. Some of the primary programs that we've done to kind of help deal with some of that aging housing stock that we mentioned earlier was the Emergency Home Repair Program, the Housing Rehabilitation Program. Neighborhood Reach has been a phenomenal program, our local housing assistance program, and then, the public-private partnerships that we've developed, and they just highlighted a few, Bethel CDC and their programs for a single-family and homeownership and rental, and then, obviously, Tallahassee Lenders Consortium. The average construction costs for the Bethel CDC units, of course, is lifted up in your item, is about 80 grand. They had over 70 units that they've done throughout that area. Bethel CDC, of course, has done some new innovative things as far as their rental housing. They've got about nine rental units that they're devoting to disabled individuals, working families, and all with the mindset of putting forth a self-sufficiency model that involves budget planning and any other training that they can provide that family to kind of help them with a hand up rather than a hand out. So, and that's where that's been.
So, and that's where that's been. The next slide, of course, just highlights, there have been numerous neighborhoods, I've indicated in the slide, South City, Appalachia Ridge, Bond, Providence, and it doesn't stop there, but there have been about 4,000 homes that have benefited from this particular program at a cost of about $2.2 million. The Neighborhood Services efforts have been very instrumental for us. The Community Human Service Partnership has been a very good partnership between the city, the county, and United Way, to most efficiently distribute funding toward human services entities within the Southern Strategy Area, but not just the Southern Strategy Area for the sake of this conversation, but we just want to lift up some of the CHP organizations that are actually physically located in the South Side, that are possibly impacting the majority of the people, or some of the people within that area, although they do serve all of Tallahassee. The first one we'll lift up is the Senior Service Center. They do have the South Side Outreach Program, which serves low-to-moderate-income individuals aged 55 and older. The program accomplishments, as of the last reporting period, was there about 165 seniors that received services to, from low-impact exercise, medication, monitoring, health management, diabetes support groups. The feedback that we've got from that particular program is that 98% surveyed confirmed their increased knowledge relative to health status. 99% surveyed confirmed that their health status was improved and reported a more positive outlook on life. The next agency is the Smith Williams Service Center. They have an after-school summer enrichment and girls mentoring program that's provided structured enrichment activities for children and youth from grades K through 12. Last year, over 139 children and youth received services, various services along nutrition and health education, prevention interventions, et cetera. The accomplishments was about 95%, which represents about 48 of the 50 after-school participants who were promoted to the next grade. Next agency was Kids Incorporated. They did a early head start, they do a early head start program. That is, of course, a federally funded program designed to meet the needs of low-income families from birth to birth age and low-income prenatal women. It also has been very successful, had 132 Leon County children receive early education intervention services. Our next highlight is America's Second Harvest, the food bank. They have also been very successful with providing grocery products to nonprofit agencies to help feed the hungry. The agencies using those have been brought, different methods have they used, brown bags for seniors, child nutrition, after-school snack, and so on. The program accomplishments is approximately 67,480 Leon County residents have received some type of food support from the entity. The next, of course, is the Big Ben Cares Facility. They provided direct clients to individuals in our community who are infected with the HIV/AIDS virus, and so, of course, they do wraparound services for those individuals. And their accomplishments, they've seen about 964 clients. 90% of the clients obviously live before, below 200% of the federal poverty guidelines.
And not only are they making difference with the programs they're providing, but they're providing a difference physically with the South Side by the new facility they're creating down in that area, which I think is going to really lift up that intersection at Magnolia and Monroe Street.
The Boys and Girls Club of Big Ben has also been very helpful, as many of you know the organization very well, and, of course, their accomplishments, they saw over 554 youths participate in their program. Next, we have the Capital City Youth Services. They actually have two programs, the Someplace Else Program, that's serving youth aged 10 to 17, and they also have the Transitional Living Program to support housing for homeless runaways from 12 to 18. For the last reporting period, the SEP Program or the Someplace Else Program housed about 526 youths. According to the USDJJ report, 89% of the youths served were not adjudicated or convicted. And since 2013, the Transitional Living Program has served about 14 youths. Next, we have the Neighborhood Medical Center Services, provides an array of healthcare services, serves uninsured, low-income adults and low-income families. Excuse the typo there. The program accomplishments last reporting period, the clinic served about 9,779 residents, with an increase of more than 2,000 people. And then, of course, on the same slide, we have a separate program with the 211 Big Ben Helpline, 211 Program. That's been helpful dealing with folks who are dealing with crisis issues and suicide prevention, different things that they provided there. They responded to over 20,882 calls in our last reporting period. The next program, of course, is African Caribbean Dance Theater. They've been providing classes for choreography, instruction to youth and adults. The program accomplishments, as of the last reporting period, they had about 50 people participating in that particular program. The Emergency Care Help Organization also provides emergency service to people in crisis, and they've also had some accomplishments. The Renaissance Community Center served over 19,676 homeless residents in that particular program. Next, the Livingstone International has an after-school tutoring and mentoring program that enhances the quality of high-risk or at-risk children's education for a specific group of children called Children of Inmates. Their accomplishments, as of the last reporting period, they served about 17 children. Of those 17 children, 100% were promoted to the next grade. So, just to provide you kind of a recap of what our expenditures have been over the past five fiscal years, we've had a little over $2.1 million spent funding these particular agencies, dealing with human service needs within the community. Commissioner Miller, you had made reference earlier. Our next slide is going to highlight the Community Neighborhood Renaissance Partnership Program, which was an initiative developed in collaboration with neighborhood associations and community partners to identify projects and programs to benefit selected neighborhoods over a five-year period. That program was conducted between 2001 and 2006. Some of the successes of the program, the two neighborhoods that were able to participate were Appalachia Ridge and Providence, and in the Appalachia Ridge neighborhood, they were able to get sidewalks, installed streetlights, had some traffic calming devices, and streets like Ponyat, Cobble Street, Harwood were benefactors of that. The other neighborhood, obviously Providence, they had about $21.9 million in bond proceeds to improve nine street segments, including about $10.7 million for five streets in the neighborhood, McCaskill, Lake, Holmes, Stuckey, and Highland. And then, one of the more prevalent structures that developed was the Providence Neighborhood Community Center. Next, we'll just highlight some of our Parks and Recreation and Neighborhood Affairs efforts. They have numerous facilities and programs that they've offered down through the years. One of those things that came to fruition during the Renaissance Partnership was the Jack McLean Center, and the Jake Gaither, Walker Ford, and Smith Williams are all of the community centers that are in the area. The Palmer Monroe Teen Center is also included in that area and has served many youth in that community. And the next slide is just highlighting some of our Cares efforts. Commissioners, if you recall, we had an initiative called Cares, was creating awareness of resources and educational services that really came to fruition after we learned of the disparaging statistics around low-birth weight babies and infant mortality that was lifted up from the community in South City. Pastor Eddie Franklin, if you recall, and Courtney Atkins with Whole Child Leon, brought that to the bear, and as a result, we responded, responded very well in trying to promote health and wellness, and garnered partnerships with many different public and private sector organizations throughout our community. It was conducted mostly through March 2014 of that year, and then through the fall of August of last year, and connected residents to various city and community-wide partner service agencies such as Career Source Capital Region. They had their actual mobile unit out there for one of our events. You know, people could go on and apply for jobs if they wanted to. We had TMH out there, another medical service entities, Bond, Community Health, giving health screenings to people. Commissioners, I know you were out there on several events. One of the particular ones, the Health and Fitness Event that we partnered with United Way and the Tallahassee Democrat on. FSU was involved with that, FAMU, all of the different institutions, a lot of partners, not to get into naming every single one, but we had over 50 different service providers participate in that program. Some of the highlights of the events that we did in partnership with our awesome Tallahassee team here, we did Super Clean Sweep, the Kids Fun and Learning Day, Community Service Day, I mentioned Health and Fitness Day, Earth Savers Program, which was a nine-week program where kids kind of learned a lot about the STEM components of doing daily operations at the city. Very, very impactful program. And then we had the Agro South City Community Garden Grand Opening. We did Splash and Jam, a lot of crime prevention, education, education events held, and also TPD fire safety programs. One of the more prevalent things that came out of that was the ULI Building Healthy Places Initiative. ULI took attention to the efforts that we were doing and basically responded with wanting to have a technical assistance panel, which then produced our ULI South City Report. The community redevelopment efforts, the Greater Frenchtown South Side CRA, of course, has done some investment in the area. Some of the things that we lifted up earlier was the Providence Center. They've done the Hinson Commercial Building there, the Big Ben Cares, they've just recently, Commissioners, your board approved the commercial, the Big Ben Cares funding, then they've done Early's Kitchen. This is just to name a few. In the fall, of course, of last year, the CRA board approved the investment plan for 2016 to 2020. There were about four programs total and six projects, and they're listed there. The programs were Neighborhood Enhancement and Public Safety Program, Housing Rehabilitation, Event Grants, Business Facility Improvement Grant. The projects were for large project funding, South Side Farmers Market, bus shelters, South Monroe Adams Corridor, FAMU Way to Magnolia Drive, Art District. And the total amount, this is a little over $2.5 million, is in the plan and directly impacts the South Side, particularly the South Adams, South Monroe area. Right now, there's a proposed South Side Town, South Shopping Center, Streetscape, Landscape Improvement Project that's coming up, and within that is allocated about $200,000. The Big Ben Cares Facility will also hopefully be constructed, the medical facility and service expansion at $1.5 million. And then, of course, the Piggly Wiggly Corporation will be going into the old Harveys. That was one of the biggest issues that the community had, was access to fresh food. The Piggly Wiggly does provide that response to that. Next slide, Commissioners, is basically a summary of projects that we've done, a totaling up of projects from 2010 to 2015. What you have before you is estimated with stormwater, sewer, electric, natural gas, all other kinds of infrastructure improvements. Just over $300 million in that five-year period has been expended to enhance the area.
That number is pretty staggering, and we wanted to make sure that you understood that from the capital infrastructure investment, there's been significant investment to try to lift the areas up and provide the services that are needed to grow that area, provided we could get the area to grow.
Now, that's 2010 to 2015, right?
Yes, ma'am. The next slide, Commissioners, just kind of lists a few projects. The South Side Flood Relief Project was a conglomeration. It was a name given, wasn't an official name, was just a name given to the project. These are a list of projects that are public infrastructure-wise that have been done in that area, the Neighborhood Infrastructure Capital Improvement Program. Of course, more recently, the Investment Plan, Palmer Avenue, if you recall, that improvement that was made as a part of the Monroe Adams Sense of Place, that is near the actual Hinson Commercial Building off of South Monroe and Adams. Then you have the Capital Cascades Trail that's under construction, and then you have the South Side Connectivity Project that, more recently, we were unsuccessful in obtaining a Tiger grant for, but that is the project that involves the Magnolia Trail Extension, and also the proposed superstop location at the corner of Orange and Meridium. And then, of course, we have the 2020 Sales Tax Projects, and we're going to segue into that now. This just kind of gives you a summary of the Bond Community Street improvements that have been made over time in the 2010-2015 period. You can see some of the streets on there and some of the improvements that have been made. The next one just kind of gives you a little...
Excuse me, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you, since I can't read these, there's a small... Could you basically tell us what some of these colors indicate?
Yes, ma'am, I have a black and white, so let me get a color.
Oh, my. All you need is magnifying glass on our copy.
The colors just indicate what the particular street is...
Oh, no, I understand. Over here, they have a legend, and it indicates what the colors mean, whether they're, what types of improvements they are. So if you wouldn't mind just briefly run down this quickly?
Yes, ma'am, those were, for most of them.
Those are just street names.
They match the street names.
Those are street names.
Okay, so each street has a different color, is what you're telling me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We had to make it interesting somehow.
Oh, it does, it looks very nice.
The next slide basically captures, just a snapshot of everything, gives you a little more closer-up view, hopefully, and kind of boxes in on certain things, such as where the Southern Strategy Area line falls, where FAMU Way is, some of the impacts that are being made there to Magnolia, a multi-use trail, which is a partnership with the county, the proposed sidewalks, the South Side Multimodal Center, which is part of that South Side Connectivity Project, as well as the Palmer Avenue Project, and just kind of gives you a mapping of where those projects are. The next one is a overview of where we are with the 100-year flood zone area. That just kind of gives you a general overview. There have been efforts to curb that, where those areas are, the hashed areas are, but that just kind of gives you a general overview. And the next slide kind of gives you the Sales Tax summary of where we've been. As you know, we have the Capital Cascades Trail Bridge, the Capital Cascades Park, FAMU Way, Magnolia Multi-Use Trail, which is under construction now. We have, within the 2020 portion of that, the Capital Circle Southwest, Orange Avenue Widening, the Airport Gateway, the South Side Gateway, the Monroe Adams Corridor, the Fairgrounds, and as you know, more recently, there was a market study conducted on that to kind of determine what the feasibility of redeveloping that site was. The county ordered that, and that report was provided last year. The bike route, and then, of course, Sidewalk and Greenway's Master Plan are all included. The bike route, and then, of course, Sidewalk and Greenway's Master Plan are all included within that.
Commissioners, if I could just add to this slide, these are projects that were identified as the 2020 Sales Tax Projects, so we'll begin receiving funds in that in 2020. A total, you probably can't read it in the table on the chart, but it's $245 million of estimated projects. In addition to that, there is $45 million that will be going to the City of Tallahassee and $45 million to Leon County as well to deal with stormwater issues throughout the community. I do know that Stormwater Division had some projects in this area, and those aren't specifically listed, but that $45 million pot of stormwater money was to make those improvements that they had previously identified in that area.
The next slide just kind of really captures what the county, more recently, provided us regarding their public infrastructure projects. Just a real quick snapshot, there's their Lakeview Bridge Improvement, and then there's the Magnolia Multi-Use Trail, and then there's the Woodside Heights Neighborhood Sewer Project. And there's a map on the next slide that kind of gives you an indication of where that falls within the S S A. Our economic development efforts with an emphasis on jobs and education, we've had quite a few things that we've been engaged with, primarily highlighting the more recent Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, where we had over 100 youth ages 15 to 20 participate. That was a six-week summer jobs-based program where they were learning professional skills and development impact. And then there was also pre and post-testing from that particular event, I mean, excuse me, from that particular initiative. And we actually are in the planning stages of that, again, for this year, but in broadening that partnership base to the local businesses who may want, wish to participate as well in that particular program. Another program that has been very beneficial is the Leon Works Expo. They more recently launched that last year, Leon County. It was done in October. We partnered with them. We had our departments, utilities was there, aviation, T P D, T F D were there, and really engaged over 300 area high school juniors and seniors, and really kind of sparked their interest around opportunities that may not involve them for those who don't have a college trajectory, to kind of give them an opportunity to see what their alternatives are. And there's a lot of vocational opportunities that this event featured, and so there's a lot of engagement there and, well, a lot of good participation from not just the high school-aged students, but also adults who came later in the evening at the same event and were also able to participate and engage and figure out some alternatives for their career plans. And certainly would be remiss if we did not mention Goodwill Industries. They have a facility out on Mayberry, the Prosperity Center, that provides myriad of services, job placement assistance, access to training and education programs for self-sufficiency, personalized financial planning services, and so on, that they provide in that facility. We, as a city, took some of the folks over from South City over to view it at the time, and some of the pastors attended and got a chance to walk through the facility and engage with some of the workers there and also find out what their programs and services were. And I think since then, there's been some partnerships that have come of that. On the business development side, the three primary commercial uses have mainly office, retail, and warehouse. The small business development piece of that, of trying to expand self-sufficiency program models, has been focused on small business development. The Small Business Development Center at FAMU and the Tallahassee Housing Authority partnered to put together a nine-week program for residents within the Tallahassee Housing Authority units there. We had about, I want to say about five participants from South City that were in that. Some wanted to do, be a janitor or start the childcare services, so they were able to get detailed information about what it takes to start a business, business planning assistance, all the things that they would need to kind of get up and running, as well as information on access to capital, which is a major issue for any startup. With the Enterprise Zone, which has been a widely-used program over the years, the Enterprise Zone unfortunately faded with our state legislature this last year. They deemed it to be an ineffective program, not really performing well in their standards, and so the program ended up fading away in December of last year. So that is no longer a tool we have. We'll segue now into our U L I highlights. As you can see, I won't go through each one, but there are about 10 principles for the Build and Healthy Places Initiative, which is what the group came, the Technical Assistance Panel for U L I, came and based their report to us on things like Empowering Champions for Health, Making Healthy Choices Easy, Mixing It Up, Promoting Access to Healthy Food, Recognizing the Economic Value. Some of the progress report on some of that is dealing with the Empowering Champions for Health, which is the South Side Community Task Force, led by Commissioner Richardson.
Did we actually do that, what they suggested?
Task force?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the people they suggested are on this?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, I mean, I don't know much about what's been happening with that. Could you fill us in?
Yes. We, as you probably recall, after we had the briefing on the U L I report, the commission agreed that we would move forward with beginning to implement the recommendations of that report. One of their first and top recommendations was that a task force be established to develop a strategic plan for implementing the recommendations, and my intent was not to let one speck of dust collect on that report before we started to implement those recommendations. What U L I looked at was improving health in the community through the built environment. And of course, they spent a couple of days with us touring the South City area, meeting with residents, meeting with city staff and commissioners, and not only South City, but they also included at our request the South Monroe, South Adams Street corridors and made recommendations both near-term and long-term for improvements that needed to be made in that area. And so we, working with the city manager, we did put together a task force that's met, Chris, I guess-
Three times.
Three times, which includes stakeholders in the area. It's actually co-led by Torio Osborne and builds upon the work that the South Side Redevelopment Advisory Council has done, which was led by Michelle Hartson and Bill Wilson, Torio Osborne, Wendy Gray, volunteers who have spent well over a year putting together, Marie Bryant was a part of that, Pastor Franklin, volunteers at no expense to the city, have worked over a year looking at the needs of the South City area and have come up with a plan for, which the U L I report drew heavily from what they had already done and acknowledged that. They certainly acknowledged that. And so we have met as a task force. Our goal was initially, the stakeholders have been Florida State, FSU through its College of Medicine, Courtney Atkins serves on that, representing Whole Child, as I mentioned, Torio and Wendy representing the South Side Revitalization Advisory Council, Marie Bryant, Pastor Franklin, Ed Murray representing the business community in the chamber, and a number of others. But we've met, and initially, we have tried to educate them, very much like what we're doing this afternoon, on the demographics of the area, the challenges faced by that area, and some of the initiatives that have already begun to address those issues. Our goal is to come up with a strategic plan, and hopefully, we will have at least a first draft of that. Bill Wilson has graciously volunteered to facilitate us moving towards developing that strategic plan so that it will coincide with our budget process. So if there are issues that will have a fiscal impact, we can build that into budgets going forward, not only next year's budget, but budgets going forward.
My question is, and I appreciate all the work that you've done, but, because I've had conversations with some of the folks that were on the U L I committee, and their recommendation included appointees from this commission, in addition to the county commission, Leon County Schools, FAMU, FSU, T C C, residents, healthcare providers, faith-based community nonprofits, and so on, because what they really wanted was, in addition to what you're doing, Commissioner, is such a powerful group of people that could bring to bear resources that aren't just the City of Tallahassee's resources, but city resources that are available for virtually every major component, whether it's business or not-for-profit or government or whatever, in our area. And I know what you're doing is helpful, but it's really not what their recommendation was. And that's something that I want to come back to, because I think, quite frankly, for us to be able to do what we need to do, we need far greater partnerships than we currently have, because we can't do this alone. This is such a significant and immense project that we need to undertake, that we really need everyone at the table. The one thing that we've learned, virtually everything we do, is if we work together, we're successful. And there are so many people that aren't at the table currently that need to be high-level people. I mean, I'm talking about major administrators or presidents of these different organizations at the table, much the same as the Blueprint effort, because that's why Blueprint was successful, is because we had virtually every single layer of this community part of it, and they were high-level individuals, and I think we need to do that. So I appreciate everything that's been done to this point, but I really, this U L I recommendation, I would like us to perhaps reconsider that and maybe bring some of those folks to the table as well.
Yeah, and Commissioner Ziffer, we certainly considered that, but as you know, people at that level get called on a lot. President Murdoch, God bless him, he probably serves on just about every major committee in this town. And so we didn't want to wait until we could get a group like that together to begin the process. Now, we tried to include as many of the stakeholders as possible. Certainly, we can reach out and include those individuals, but had we tried to include people at that level, it, we would have been another year trying to get this thing off the ground, because they are so busy and just, even the people that we're working with now, trying to coordinate schedules, it has been almost an impossibility. And so we wanted to move forward, and so, you know, as we get into the implementation of the recommendations that come out of the strategic plan, certainly, we will include all of those stakeholders, because I agree, this entire community has to make a commitment to seeing that this happens. And certainly, the city government itself can't do it alone. We've got to have all of our partners committed to making this happen.
But we would be asking the stakeholders, the major stakeholders, to support something that they were not involved with, and I don't think we're going to be able to get them at that point. I think they need to be on the ground floor. And I would venture to guess, because it's very public now, that if we made those calls to those folks, they would come. This is significant. I mean, Chief, the last year has not been easy for you and your department, and quite frankly, there are, I know, people at the university that are concerned, not about your efforts, but the fact that we have pretty significant crime here. And I think they're prepared to be at the table. We certainly have been going through a process lately on economic development where we see that there has been conversation, but we're going to come out together and work as a group. We need to do that here, and I think the only way we're successful is if we engage, like I said, all these other layers that can bring tremendous resources to bear to help us help folks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
Well, I wanted to know if we could park this discussion for a minute and let us go through the rest of the report-
Sorry.
-because we could get caught up in talking about this, and, because I have a lot of things to say about it, too. So let's finish the report and come back to this if we're good. Thank you. And that means we're handing it back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to go forward there, the Ensure Equitable Access, the Lift Our Kids Initiative, Commissioner Ziffer and Commissioner Maddox leading that effort at this time, and then, of course, Putting People First, our LED lighting installation was about really just trying to make things safer, make things brighter, and we've done that. You can see in the South Side, there are some, and incrementally, where needed, we've put in new LED lighting throughout. The Promote Access to Healthy Food, of course, our response to that was the Agro South City Community Garden, which was what they recommended. We completed it. And of course, the Piggly Wiggly Grocery Store, with that coming in, also meets that need, and that's a private sector-led effort. The Energize Share Spaces, of course, goes back to the Magnolia Trail. And then the next slide, of course, Recognizing the Economic Value. We have an investment plan that will impact at least the main artery and corridor of the South Side, the South Adams, South Monroe Corridor, and it will be impactful if implemented as proposed. And then, of course, within that investment plan, there is a public art, which was another piece of it that was recommended, that there'd be a sense of place and cultural and public art presence to kind of help encourage people to come to the area.
Could I?
Please.
I would like to know where the recommendations on connections to FAMU are, because they had really, really stressed in their conversation that it was basically unacceptable to them that FAMU was right across the street, and the opportunities that a liaison program's interconnecting those two with the youth in the area, going to FAMU and visiting and seeing what college looks like, and, you know, that kind of thing. And that's not in here, so where is that? Is it in the detail? I mean, is it, did you just leave that to the detail of the report? Because that's a real important piece of this.
Well, I think part of that, Chris, is the fact that we don't have FAMU's master plan. One of the recommendations was to tie South City to the Bond Community-
Right.
-with improvements to Putnam Drive, but that involves, working with Florida A and M University, they have yet to provide their college master plan. There have been discussions with the president about that, so that hasn't been lost on us-
I just wanted to make sure-
-that connection.
It isn't lost.
One primary project, Commissioner, that is actually providing that connection will be, and it'll be in conjunction with the Big Ben Cares Construction Project, would be the Magnolia Trail, would provide a direct connection between the South City and FAMU campus.
I just want to make sure it's on there.
As well as the 2020 Sales Tax, the South Monroe, South Adams Sense of Place had a lot of connectivity for Palmer, well, Palmer's been completed, but I believe there were four other connections from Monroe Street all the way over to Adams Street.
And the last item on, just to progress where we are with the U L I report, is the Whole Child Leon's Community Health Assessment Survey that was done in the fall of last year. They're compiling results and should have that for distribution soon. Just to recap, Commissioners, the major South Side initiatives, of course, we have the South City Tap Report, the Promise Zone, the Operation Safe Neighborhoods, the Neighbors on the Block, the Mobile Farmers Market, Revitalization of South Side Neighborhood Associations, the Community Health Assessment Survey, and of course, the trend that we're starting to see where there are programs centered around family self-sufficiency and how families can enhance their own well-being through those various programs.
Next slide. Commissioners, what this map is intended to illustrate is not necessarily the magnitude of dollars in particular areas, because what may be important for one neighborhood may be not so important for another. For example, sidewalks are extremely critical in our South City area, but you may have sidewalks in another area, and they only want central sewer. So what this map represents is, from your capital infrastructure program, the areas that you have touched with those projects, both existing as well as proposed in the 2020 Sales Tax. So it gives you an idea that you've got a pretty good coverage of trying to deal with infrastructure issues throughout the Southern Strategy Area. So this next last slide, before we get into questions- So this next last slide, before we get into questions and comments, in your comprehensive plan where the Southern Strategy area was originated and staff has been working towards addressing the issues throughout this corridor, basically are kind of grouped into three different areas. You've got the housing development, community redevelopment and infrastructure, and economic development. As we indicated to you previously, on March 10th, we will have a discussion on housing issues throughout the community. I think we'll touch on that a lot more during that workshop. When we talk about the community redevelopment and infrastructure, we've done a very good job of planning and programming infrastructure for the area. The numbers show it. Whether or not it's sufficient to address all the issues, I think is debatable. I think there's still areas that need some basic infrastructure, but you've done a really good job directing capital infrastructure throughout that area. And then lastly, as we talk about economic development, another hot topic that's going to be coming before you in the near future, how do you deal with the 2020 sales tax economic development dollars? If you notice the trends or one of the requests from the community meetings, just job training is essential for the citizens out there to be able to make, have a job, make an income, and try to narrow those gaps between the Southern Strategy area income versus the income throughout Leon County. So with that, we have thrown out a lot to you all. And certainly, if the issues were easy to address and make a difference in those demographics that we provided to you, they would be done by now. So this is, I guess, your opportunity to look at what you've done up to this point and what the community's done up to this point, and see if there are things that specifically we need to be focused on in the near future and in the extended future. So with that, I think Chris has done an extremely awesome job assembling this information, so we appreciate him.
Thank you, Chris. That's right. Thank you very much, Chris, and also Wayne, and to all of the staff that contributed to the combination of all this information. Commissioners, we have quite a range of, I think, sort of subject areas within, subcategories within this conversation. I'm open to any maybe general feedback first, and then maybe we can dive in, or we can dive in with anyone's questions or comments.
Anyone want to start?
Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
Well, first of all, I think that we ought to seriously consider reevaluating some of these goals that are in the Southern Strategy area that you have kindly reiterated for us. These were formulated several years ago, and some of this is actually, I believe, not leading us where we need to go. I know that the conversation about affordable rental housing has come up recently. Dot Emma Johnson brought that up at the retreat. And we had, and we, you know, we all address, we all know that we don't have really enough housing that's affordable to our young professionals who are just getting out of college. We have these stated goals that we want people to stay here, but anybody that's got, you know, and this takes up a lot of our, a lot of our population, a $20,000 to $30,000 a year salary just doesn't cover the rents. And so that, and then yet, when we go to the Southern Strategy area goals, I think it leads us toward basically gentrification of the area, and the folks that we're trying to help are going to end up having to leave because they can't afford to go there. So that was the first thing I wanted to reiterate. The second thing is that the Southern Strategy area includes a quadrant of our city. We, just moving past the fact that we have an entire city to take care of, not just one area, there's that. But then, on the other hand, everyone in that area needs to be, the needs of all those people need to be addressed. I mean, I had been aware of the fact that the South Side Committee Task Force had been convened, but I really didn't think it was just for South City. I thought it was for the Southern, the Promise Zone area. So maybe we need a little bit more definition about exactly the targeted area that we are, that we're talking about, because we can't, and actually, when we, Commissioner Richardson, he basically said that we agreed to do all these things in the ULI report, and I specifically remember that meeting, and I said, before that, before we agree to anything, I don't want folks left out, and I want to address the entire South Side. I mean, at that point, we discussed the fact that we have the Promise Zone, we have the community school effort, we have the South Side Initiative from ULI. These all needed to be, just as you have done a phenomenal job of bringing in all this material to us. And now that we have it all, we really need to be considerate about how we're going to go forward. We don't have unlimited resources, and we've got, we've spent quite a bit of money already, not just in cash, but in human resources, the police resources and everything. And yet, in the report, you indicate, you know, you've got these incredible trends maps, and every single trend is negative. So we have to be smarter about how we make investments. We have to be smarter about what we do. We've got to figure out what we can do that will work, because we've been working very hard. It is obvious from your report, but we are not, it may be, it's possible that this has kept things from getting worse than they would ordinarily be, but it certainly has not even come close to meeting the goals that were originally set out in the Southern Strategy area, or even to help folks to get a leg up. I mean, things are only getting worse for them, and so we've got to be more strategic about how we spend our money.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Maddox.
I'd like, it doesn't have to be today, but of all the numbers that we heard of expenditures, I'd like a total on those that we spent over a period of time on the South Side. And I agree with Commissioner Miller that when you look at the total amount of dollars spent, we need to make sure we're getting the right bang for the buck. So the reason I want that number is to know what we'll spend in the years forward, we'll use that as a baseline, and if we had that to spend in the next five years, what's the most effective way to spend it to address the problems there?
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Whatever we do, I'd like to build into that measurement goals, so that we can, on a regular basis, determine if we're reaching what we're trying to do, because it doesn't seem like, at least for, if you look at these numbers for the past 40 years, whatever we've been spending on there, if somebody could provide me a report, which I don't think they can, of where we were in all the accountability goals that we set, because my guess is we didn't. And I'm not altogether sure just infrastructure is the answer to all of this. And so that's why I think there needs to be more of an examination of what other areas have done. And, you know, I, several people on the ULI committee mentioned me, Paramore Project in Central Florida and Orlando, very similar situation to what we have here. And they are making a tremendous investment there, but it's not only, you know, streets and gutters and sidewalks, it's other things, too. So I think bringing in other people that have greater knowledge than us would be helpful, and putting together this task force on a broader scale would be helpful, and I just want to make sure, whatever we do, we're held accountable, that it meets the goals that we set.
Commissioners, if I could also add, so as FAMU looks to expand their campus, and they start pushing southward and eastward, as the VA clinic opens up and the youths that start building out there, and they start pushing westward, I think those types of activities will start generating some interest as far as from the development community in a significant way.
But Commissioner Miller said it, okay, so one of the goals originally was to increase property values.
Yes.
How does that help people that live there? It might drive them out to situations that are far worse. So I want us to be really mindful of, and I mentioned this in our retreat the other day, the Magnolia Trail is wonderful, but there are probably not going to be buses anymore to take those kids to Hartsfield, because part of the legislature, the legislature required busing for kids that didn't have a sidewalk to get to school. So now we've created a walking trail and sidewalk, and so those kids are going to have to go back to walking a long distance to go to their elementary school. Those are unintended consequences. We need to make sure that we look ahead.
On the diversity of housing point, Commissioners, you know, my thinking on that, and I'm extremely sensitive to the push-out effect. In fact, when we were buying the appropriate parcels as we began to aggregate land along FAMU Way and relocate what had been a number of his, you know, families that had been there intergenerationally, when we originally looked at it, you know, the calculation was, well, they're not a whole bunch of homeowners. But when you pull back the layer a little bit deeper, they may not be homeowners, but they've been longtime renters. In fact, properties have been passed from the grandmother to the child, and then that child's child. And so with the redevelopment efforts, I think we have to have an eye toward that, but I want to balance that by the fact that we also have to have a diversity of housing in the area. You know, part of the challenge with some of the public schools is you've got 98% of the folks on for your reduced lunch. Almost all of them are Title I schools, and that is not in and of itself a bad thing, but the truth is, is, you know, people who are locating and purchasing homes, who are upwardly mobile, look first at the school districts, that their kids are going to attend school. And so if we don't have the, you know, the diversity of the student population, mixed income, so on and so forth, you know, we're reinventing, you know, in many ways, you know, the same problem, so. But we can't have it both ways, and we can't speak out of both sides of our mouths, which is why, you know, I think what would be helpful is an updated, as Commissioner Miller suggested, philosophy approach for redevelopment within the corridor. And I would back up to say, first, we need to find the map, because, Chris, you did a great job of overlaying a lot of those things, but what was missing, and I'm glad you mentioned it, is that some of the boundaries extended outside of what has been the traditional Southern core, the Promise Zone, for instance, you know, we left out the whole other half of it if you were just judging by this map. Not your fault, but there are a lot of different maps, and you can't, everything can't be the priority at this moment, because when everything's a priority, nothing's the priority. So, you know, and that's the work of this commission, and I'm not sure how far we can get on this today, but I don't just mean geographically focusing. I also mean from an issue standpoint focusing, and that's one of the reasons why, Commissioners, I have been, you know, really insistent on this Promise Zone or Opportunity Zone or whatever we apply. We've got an item later this evening around whether we go back again for that designation federally, but regardless if we don't even get that designation, it provides us a bit of a roadmap of where we want to concentrate, where we want to focus. And what we know about that map is, the highest crime rates in the city are in that jurisdiction. The worst health conditions and all going south are in that jurisdiction. Graduation rates, unemployment, poverty, you name it. And so if we address it in this area, we can change the trajectory for the whole community. I mean, we can reshuffle that for the whole community, which is why, you know, I don't know where we'll end on this map, but, you know, my vote is for a map that contains that area, because it was defined specifically to address the problems that we're talking about today. It was designed to address every one of the issues, the incumbent issues that we have raised. And then, you know, last for me is, you know, as public policymakers, I think, you know, we have to get out of the tradition of funding to the symptoms, because, I mean, I think that's the, that's the gurney that, you know, the hamster wheel, you know, that we're on, which is, this has happened and has caused this outcome, and now let's figure out a program to speak to that outcome, rather than getting to what is at the source of a lot of this. Poverty at the source of a lot of this, and backup from poverty, a job at the source of all of this. And so what we have, and I've visited some of the folks that we recruited, take Danfoss TurboCorp, for instance, one of their biggest problems is not recruiting college graduates into their program, they're looking for skilled labor. They're looking for folks who graduated high school, or maybe not, but have the right skills that they can plug into these jobs. The same is true for even the law firm. They weren't looking for, they want people who are trained up to do the type of work that they need. So the jobs versus skills gap is, I think, where we really, you know, need to focus from the poverty, you know, from the poverty standpoint. And, you know, Commissioner Ziffer, Commissioner Maddox, you all with the, with the, with the community school. My emphasis on the early childhood piece, I think these all really come together. I mean, one of the things that I think Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Richardson would admit, having gotten from the Children Summit, was how absolutely imperative it is to start as early as you possibly can, I mean utero early. If the mother isn't eating properly, the kid is being produced with pre-existing health defects. If the mother is illiterate, or the father is illiterate, or nobody in the household reads, the kid is showing up at kindergarten knowing on average 5,000 words compared to kids from middle and upper-income households who know on average 15,000 to 30,000 words at kindergarten, the same grade level. And it begins a cycle. And so I couldn't be more insistent around why it's important to do this early childhood area. Man, this is a city, you're not the school board, why would you be involved? Well, because the symptoms of not doing it early show up on our doorsteps, on the chief's doorsteps, and on our budget line. So that's kind of where I am. It's a little bit of a bleak picture, it's a little bit frustrating, but I do think if there were decisions that we can make, it would be define a territory, one, and then I think get really clear about where we would prioritize getting at some of these, some of these issues. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, and I completely agree with you, and I wish that all of you could have been at the Mayor's Summit on Children because of the data, the 40 years of data that indicate that if a child isn't ready, he will never ever close the gap, even through 40, no matter what is done. And that was so impactful to me to realize, and, you know, study after study after study wasn't like one, you know, thing. I think that the real issues here are jobs, health, and crime. And until we have jobs for people, the crime rate will continue to be high, because people don't have any other alternative, and they can't afford to have healthy diets, healthy, you know, they can't afford to address health issues. Those are the three things, nobody's going to, and how do we get the businesses to come when we still have a high crime rate? And what do we do for skilled labor? And as long as our unemployment rate is, what did you, in the Promise Zone, something like 69%?
Four times.
Yeah, but one of the precincts was just incredibly high. And so that is absolutely the number one issue here, as far as I'm concerned, is finding ways to put folks to work. Right now, looking at all of this, this is very upsetting. I've read this thing three times. It was very, very, very upsetting to see how much work has been done, and yet, we still are having so much trouble changing the trend. So we just absolutely have to be more careful about, and accountability, just like Commissioner Ziffer mentioned. I know that the mayor has been asking for that accountability also. Right now, reading this, the nonprofits are giving us better accountability than we are giving ourselves. All the efforts that we're doing, we don't have the numbers that they have. And looking at this, it's like, good lord, if we had put this money toward one of the nonprofits, maybe we would have a better outcome. So those are the kinds of decisions. We have literally got to have a paradigm shift in the way, in the way we look at all of this. And you're, I'm losing my voice, but you're absolutely right that we have got to stop addressing symptoms, and we have start, we've got to address root causes, and we have got to make better partnerships with folks. The work that they are doing at AME, for example, that was cited in the report, is, they came to us and said, we need this money to use to establish affordable rentals as opposed to homeownership, if you will allow us that variation. So they understand the problems. They have really, really gotten down to the root causes, and the churches are provided, didn't you say 30 churches are on board in the Promise Zone last time? And that's the kind of partnerships we have got to develop, and we have got to do everything we do in partnerships with them, and also with the larger employers in the city, or the larger institutions that are able to affect change.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I want to do is to refer you all to a memorandum from Chris Edwards, and copied to the city manager September 22nd, 2015. The subject is the South Side Area Task Force, informing each of the Commissioners about the task force, that I would be leading the task force as the South Side Liaison, and also the appointees to that task force, and I would share this with anybody that's interested in reading it. We would not have moved forward with the ULI recommendations without this commission knowing and approving what we were doing. So, yeah, the commission knew, and here's the memo to indicate that. Now, let me say, what we have heard here this afternoon is distressing. We've spent a lot of money, but let me tell you, this is catch-up. This isn't starting from where everybody else was. This is catch-up. So when you talk about the So when you talk about the hundreds of millions of dollars that have been spent, this is catch-up. And I can still take you to communities in this area that we're talking about, older neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, that don't have sidewalks, that have open ditches. When I came on the commission, across from Fairview Middle School, I, across from Fairview Middle School, there was a sidewalk where kids have to cross the street through traffic and buses to get to the sidewalk. There's an open ditch right alongside the sidewalk, an open ditch. And so I questioned, why do we have an open ditch right next to a sidewalk? And we got rails put up. So, folk, this is catch-up, and we've still got a lot more catching up to do. And the one thing that I would tell you, I certainly appreciate everybody's concern, because it's gonna take all of us working together to address these issues. But I would tell you, too, that I've got skin in the game. 20 years ago this month, my wife and I moved into our house on the south side of town. We built a home on the south side of town, because we were committed to making sure that every citizen in this town, regardless of where they live, had the same opportunities. And I would tell you, certainly there are hotspots, there are areas where there are tremendous needs, but I would tell you also, there are neighborhoods like College Terrace, there are neighborhoods like Callan Subdivision, there are neighborhoods like the Tuskegee Neighborhood and Liberty University Park. So don't think that everybody who lives on the south side of town is impoverished and doesn't have skills and education. Don't think that, and we should not put that out there for anybody to believe. But do we have issues? Certainly we do, but those are issues that impact our entire community, and all of us have to be committed to addressing those issues. The one thing that we have not talked about was the tremendous leadership of our neighborhood associations, and what they have done in partnership with Chief DeLeo. We could not have done what we did this summer with the neighborhood crime watch programs, had it not been for the leadership in our neighborhoods. So government cannot do it all. Government has a role to play, a very significant role to play, because everybody in this community pays property, or those that own property pay property taxes and sales taxes, but government can't do it all. Government has to partner with the community to make these things happen. We can go in and do programs and, you know, but if there is not sustainability, we will continue to see these same problems exist, or be exacerbated over time. This has got to be a buy-in by everybody. All of us who live in the south side of town, all of us who call ourselves residents of this all-America city. We cannot be an all-America city if we've got South Cities in Tallahassee. So all of us have to be committed to addressing those issues. This is a start. Certainly, we've got to be strategic, and that's what we've tried to do through the South City Task Force, is to take a look at a specified area, because in the past, this thing has been so overwhelming, I think that's why we haven't gotten as much done as maybe we need to. But we've got to start somewhere. And so the thinking was, is that if we put a primary emphasis on South City and build out from there, and that's not to say that any other areas would be neglected, because we still have a responsibility as a city to provide services all over this community. But to begin in a very defined area like South City, to address the issues in that area, partnering with the residents in the area, empowering them to be a part of the solution, because that's the only way it's gonna be sustainable, working with the neighborhoods. And again, I want to thank Michelle and Bill, what they have done through Highlands and Myers Park, and Indian Head, and all of those other neighborhoods surrounding South City that have been involved in this process. And so I agree, Mayor, that what we need to do is to prioritize where we're gonna target resources, but we've got to make sure that every boat is lifted by this rising tide. And I think we can do that. We've got the leadership to make that happen, the leadership right here on this commission, the leadership with our city manager and his leadership team. I think one of the strongest you'll find anywhere, in any city in the state of Florida. But these are issues that are longstanding, and they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be quick fixes. It's gonna take time. And I think, Commissioners Ziffer, as you mentioned, we've all got to be committed to staying the course, and not think that we can go in with a program or some fancy title, and we're gonna change this thing overnight. We didn't get here overnight, and we're not gonna change it overnight, but I think with the commitment that all of us are showing, and I've seen a synergy in this community that I have not seen in the 40 years that I've lived here, where everybody seems to be on the same page. The private sector, the colleges, the universities, government, the neighborhood associations, and all of us are now beginning to move in the same direction. And I think that's gonna get us where we want to be as a community.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziffer, did I see your hand before?
Yeah. I'm just gonna make a motion, just to see where it goes, mainly because as much as, I'm sure we all received this memo, I don't remember voting on this, or approving it, or anything like that, but I'm sure the memo went out, and I apologize for not remembering, I get a lot of memos. But I'd like to go back to the original recommendation by the ULI to assemble a group, as identified in their proposal, that is for empower Champions for Health, and the folks that they have listed here, so that we can utilize more resources than just ours. And that's just, it's not just money, it's these different entities have, like in our universities, have people that do this for a living. This is what they've researched. I'm not sure, and I will tell you, I'll admit this, I don't know what it's really like to be in poverty. And for me to make a statement of how I'm gonna fix problems for folks in poverty, I can't answer that. But there are stakeholders I think we can bring to the table, and Commissioner Richardson, you're right, the only way this is gonna be successful is if folks that we're trying to help are at the table, and a big part of the decision-making process. So I'm gonna make a recommendation that we go back, Mr. Mayor, and appoint this task force, and we, with the city managers' help, staff it, so that we can elevate this to a far higher level than we currently are. I think we're all engaged here now, I think we have all of our attention, and so I'm gonna make that motion.
Second, just for discussion?
Yeah, thank you. And Commissioner Richardson, I don't think there is a, I don't think there's a divide around wanting to move this forward, and I think elevate it to its highest level possible. And I'm wondering how it is that we might have a coordinating group of the sort that you've already assembled, that also may allow us to get about the work of assembling the principal partners, and the private and the public sector at the university, to maybe, again, kick this to a level where those who actually have the ability to say yes and no are able to engage with this and do it in a thoughtful and committal way. My one hesitation on the motion, obviously, is that when we had the group come together down at Bethel, and the community showed up for it, but then the county on the last day, you know, sort of pulled out, and what I wouldn't want to happen, and maybe there's some due diligence that we can do to sort of figure out what the temperature is with those folks, so that we can be assured there's enough momentum to really try to get those folks to sit down. And obviously, we gotta be clear around what it is that we're asking them to do. But I don't want this to appear as if we're sort of pursuing two different strands here, and I wonder, Commissioner Richardson, if that resonates with you, or you have other thoughts?
Well, I would tell you, Mr. Mayor, I had that conversation with the previous city manager, and we were going in that direction. It was her suggestion, and I agreed with it, that if we wanted to get the ball rolling on this, that we had to have people who were gonna actually get the work done. And those people have gotten the work done up to this point. Now, if we want to have the presidents of institutions and CEOs, and if that's the direction we want to go in...
Well, I would say, I would probably agree that the manager had it right at the time, which was, if you're, if we're trying to move the ball, let's get the folks who are most accessible to us and are prepared to do the work. I think we're now, if we're gonna monopolize on the moment, are at a place where we may be able to kick this up to a level where we get resources around the table, and maybe some commitments going. Now, I don't have the wisdom that it takes for how the structure might lay out, meaning when do the decision points get made, what are the commitments, what they look like. Now, it might be that once we pull the group together, that becomes a lot more clear, you know, if we trust the process. But I do think, you know, maybe there's a way to accomplish both these, that you've got a coordinating group that continues to do, you know, the work that's been defined. And then we get a, maybe a clearer mission, particularly on map, what territory are we talking about, and maybe kick this up. Commissioner Ziffer?
I think we could call back upon, Mr. Mayor, the ULI folks, because this recommendation wasn't unique to our area either. This is recommendations that they put together for others, and I think, for example, the Paramore Projects in central Florida is very similar. So I would suggest, from a structure standpoint, a timing standpoint, and things of that nature, we might reach back to that group that were assembled back in 2014, almost two years now. We reach back to them and see if they have some type of program that we could follow. And I think it is available.
Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Miller?
I just want to ensure in the motion that Commissioner Richardson stays our point person. Is that, that's understood in the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, and my, I'm excited about the work the task force is doing, and also the Revitalization Council. I think it's just amazing that all of you have put so much work and time and effort. My issue is that it is in South City only, and I'm more interested in a boundary that is broader than that. And I understood, I didn't, I don't remember this memo specifically, but when I knew that this task force was being formed, I thought it was the South Side Task Force. And I'm not even sure when you read it, that that isn't what it said.
If we could...
But that's my issue. I want to, yes, South Side Area Task Force. So that's what I thought we were forming, and because, and the problems are, you know, the same. It's just a matter of the fact that we're, all of our efforts are focused, I can't sit by and let all the rest of the folks be left out. I mean, I just, I'm interested in including...
Commissioner Miller, it was never the intent to leave anybody out. The intent of this task force was to implement the recommendations of the ULI TAP, which were specific
Yes, they were.
to South City. Specific, a defined area with boundaries, and we were implementing those recommendations. It was never the intent to leave anybody out. We have a responsibility to every citizen in this community, regardless of what we do and where we do it. But it was never that intent. The intent was to move forward with a report that we paid good money for. And I thought it was our intent to make sure that that report didn't sit on a shelf somewhere and collect dust, that we were serious about moving forward with it. And the manager and I met and discussed it with Chris, Mr. Edwards, I guess we're being formal, and we began to move forward with this process with the blessing of our commission.
Now, Mr. Edwards, the, we've been referring to this as the South City, or, can you tell me, or South Side, but the map is the Southern Strategy area.
That is correct.
And so I just want to understand, where did the agreement on the map come from?
This was a City of Tallahassee Commission and Leon County Board of County Commissioners' adoption in the comprehensive plan.
Right, and so that's a comprehensive plan-driven map? And what we're talking about is one that is driven by condition. So I would, I don't know who wants to make the determination on this, but the promise zone map seems to have a similar total population, but I'm not sure what a part of this is in it and what part isn't. I'm a lot less concerned about the geographical boundaries of this, and much more concerned around the hot areas that have the issues that we're trying to address.
Totally.
So I don't know if you all need to codify that and then bring something back, but this map that you all have here is driven by the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
And you pulled data associated with it based off the comprehensive plan. And I don't think we're talking about the comprehensive plan, we're talking about an area that's maybe slightly different than this.
And Commissioners, to be quite frank, if this map, revised map, is reducing this area somewhat, we need to go back and look at the comprehensive plan, and maybe pull that map either out, refocus it with the map and the direction that you're giving us, or shrink the map and redo the policies and...
Well, I think you probably want to align that at some point.
Correct.
But the map that this commission and the county commission, as well as our partners, approved for the promise zone, I think the total population was 33,000, and it included South City, Providence, parts of French Town. You connected what were the hot areas, and Commissioner Richardson, I don't know if you have a preference, but my preference would certainly be for a map that tails to the problems we're trying to address versus the one that's been developed for the comprehensive Commissioner Maddox?
Before action on the motion, I'm fine elevating the members to add folks that we think can swing the biggest stick, but I do want to say that I'm glad that the working group's working.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, Commissioner Richardson, I'm glad you didn't let it sit, and you're jumping on it, you're working, and that's exactly what we want to see happen. So I'm in favor of adding anything to help you with your mission, and joining in any way that I can, but I'm thankful that we have action to report.
Here, here.
No question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think that there may be a way to accomplish both. I don't want to derail what has already been done, because we've made significant progress. And I don't know that this even requires a motion. It's a recommendation in the report, if you all want to, like I said, I did this in consultation with the manager, initially thinking that we would go that route, and she convinced me that, and I agreed, that we needed a working group that represented these institutions, but people that would be able to make meetings, maybe not make final decisions or commit resources, but certainly would get the work done. That's what we were interested in doing, getting the work done. But I think that we can assemble a group of the decision-makers, if that's what needs to be done, but I would almost guarantee you that they're gonna delegate to somebody. I can't see President Thrasher making a meeting on a Monday night at the Jack McLean Center and sitting through, you know, hours of discussion. But he would delegate someone from his staff, maybe likely whoever's already on the task force, to bring him back recommendations as to how Florida State University, and just using that as an example, can be involved.
I think, and maybe you're right, it may not require a motion, but I think the difference is that when you have a principal in the room, even if all you're doing is setting the tables so that they understand what's at stake here.
Sure.
I mean, I think what I'm most interested in is how do we get the level of urgency and understanding shared by the folks who have the ability to penetrate it? And whether, and that may be a different group of people, as you said, than the folks who are showing up every week and, you know, kind of doing that part of it, but if those folks are doing that and still don't have what is the buy-in of the principals, then we're gonna find, I predict, we'll find ourselves at another place of frustration. And that's why I think it's important to engage principals, and I think it's important... And that's why I think it's important to engage principals, and I think it's important to set the table for what's at stake, the urgency question.
I want to give an example. And Commissioner Richardson, you're right, I don't think the president of Florida State or Florida A&amp;M or Jim Murdoch are going to have time to come, but I think they will probably, hopefully, send somebody on a level that is certainly high enough to meet what we're trying to accomplish here. But if I'm going to give an example, I attended a meeting last week at the Florida State College of Medicine, and they are going through a process where they're identifying potentially a couple of locations where they will actually open medical clinics, medical clinics, to serve underserved people. And I think we need to know that in these conversations, but without that high level from Florida State, we probably would be unaware of that. I know one of the locations they were seriously looking at is somewhere in Frenchtown, which would be, when you look at some of the statistics we looked at, that's clearly an underserved area when it comes to delivering medical services. Great. So that's one of the issues that clearly we have there. So by bringing in high-level people in addition to the work that your group is doing, I think we have a lot more information and power brought to the table to achieve these goals that we're going to be setting. I think all of us are talking the same thing, and I think we can do this together.
Commissioner, if you're agreeable.
I would be more than happy to work with the manager to determine a structure and a process for, obviously, carrying out the will of the commission at this point.
Indeed.
Like I said, at the time we began this, it was what our previous city manager and I thought was the will of the commission. If that has changed, then certainly we can accommodate the new direction that the commission wants to take.
I just want to clarify, because I don't want you to have the wrong impression. I don't think any of us, whether we looked at the memo or not, disavow that you were the city commission's appointed person and that you were moving forward on this. I think what has occurred today is actually a good thing, which is our level of attentiveness to this, I think, is such that there's an urgency factor. And a desire to want to see this kicked to a level where we don't, a year from now, aren't back here looking at the same kinds of numbers. Commissioner Miller?
Well, again, I do feel that all of the, and I want everyone to be aware that I was the major proponent of that ULI study, and that ULI folks coming in with the manager, pushed her, agreed, and said, talked the commission into, I mean, I had observed the one that we had had before, the Renaissance in the Providence neighborhood, that was just phenomenal, and we maybe ought to get some of that out, speaking of gathering dust, and see some of the recommendations they made in that instance. But until we accept the fact that South City is a segment of a larger area that needs attention, I can't vote for any further action on anything other than just to let the task force continue to do its work on the South City area. But I want to see us focusing on the larger area. I want to see us vote, we're going to be asked tonight to approve going forward with the promise zone recommendation. I want the promise zone included in the area that we're studying, to have the promise zone effort and the South City effort and the community school effort and the other effort. I mean, to have all these efforts disengaged from one another, to me, is not helpful. We need a strategy that addresses the entire problem everywhere, and until we get to that point, I'm not ready to set up any more task forces. So if you'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Actually, Commissioner, I'm going to argue that we don't have the wherewithal to attack a 40-square-mile area.
No.
We just don't.
No.
Not to mention this whole South Side that we refer to as the, I don't even know what that means. And because I look at, as Commissioner Richardson suggested, not all the South Side is the same situation as South City. South City is the lightning point. It's where the fire begins and spreads. And if we can deal with an area that, and Chief, I don't know, I mean, you can answer better than anybody. I know when we started the community school effort, we talked about the real heavy crime areas, and that was one of them.
Yes, sir.
It's not the whole, the whole South Side's not a heavy crime area. When it comes to food, when it comes to education, when it comes to low birth weight and all this, South City needs help. And I'm not suggesting, Commissioner.
I'm not suggesting that they don't, that we divert. This is not a new initiative. I mean, I'm not saying anything different than I've been saying from day one on this topic. I really feel that we're just letting everybody else pushing them all aside.
No, 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 we're not, I don't think we're doing that.
Commissioner Miller, what I'm not understanding is, a second ago, you said you pushed the city manager to do the ULI.
The study, yes.
The ULI focused narrowly on South City.
On South City, that's absolutely right.
The recommendations are narrowly designed for South City. We were moving forward on those recommendations. No one ever said we were going to neglect Providence or Wilson Green or FAMU, or, I'd never heard that.
Well, if you don't see that there are, I mean, based on the report, the time, money, resources, I mean, we got more city to deal with than just the South. I mean, the whole city is, has ditches and no sidewalks and blah, 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 unless people live in a neighborhood where a developer built this infrastructure. And I care about these, I was down there last night. I mean, I care tremendously about this. I do not want to spend any more money that isn't going to show that it benefits somebody. I want much more feedback on what we've been doing before signing off on just a blank check, to continue to do, I mean, I was, the folks at ULI were supposed to give us recommendations that we apply, and now it's our turn to apply them. We don't just take them carte blanche and say, okay, we're doing every single thing in this list. We take it and say, what will work in our community to address the crime, to address the low birth weight? Because what we have been doing up until now has not worked.
Chris, and Mr. Edwards, can you clarify when Commissioner Richardson and Ziffer say "South City," what map do you all interpret that to be?
If you go back.
Is it the same map that's in our packet, the Southern Strategy?
No, no.
No, no. The South City is a neighborhood within that irregular-shaped polygon that is considered the Southern Strategy area.
That's the map.
And that's it right there, the lavender, whatever color that is. That's the study area that the ULI report was based on.
And that study area has a population of 30,000 people?
No, no, sir.
Okay, what's?
That's the entire, what is in the polygon itself, that is, that is the demographic information is for that area, the whole area.
I'm sorry, what's in the, right. So what is the demographic area for this?
For South City, it's about 2,000, I want to say, is the population there.
So this is, again, why I think that is, it's great to focus on that 2,000, but we've got about three areas, neighborhoods, whatever you want to call it. If you look at the crime data, that drives criminal activity in the community. And it's, you know, there's this concept of targeted universalism, and what it means is you focus very targetedly on where your issues are, where the drivers of your issues are, and the community universally benefits. If you address crime in this area and you bring it down here, you bring it down for the entire city. And so that's why, I mean, I think 2,000 is great, and maybe there is a working group that can, you know, that can do that, but I'm completely in favor of a map that is reflective of what we have in the promise zone application.
Mr. Mayor, I will modify my motion to refer to it as the promise zone area and leave it up to the ULI committee or whatever this committee is going to be, to make the determination and recommendations to us to best utilize our resources. And keep in mind, these are not only monetary resources, because there's more to trying to address poverty than money.
Sure.
I mean, there clearly are. And I'll give you an example, I mean, jobs are clearly one of the most important things, but the job training is nowhere near where a lot of these folks live. And so I think there are other things than just throwing money at it, and I think we need to do that. So my motion will include the entire promise zone area.
A second still stands. Commissioner, so I think what we're now zeroing in on, in addition to Commissioner Richardson's commitment to get with the manager on defining a structure that makes sense and meets the spirit of the recommendations, but that the map utilized will consist of the promise zone area. Are there other comments or questions on here, Commissioner Richardson?
I guess where my frustration comes in is, and I have not heard anywhere in the discussion here this afternoon that any area was going to be neglected.
I don't, I don't, I never said that, and I don't think any area is going to be neglected. My only point is, is if the, if the, if the issues are as they are described, which are jobs, health, crime, infrastructure, youth has been described in the CHS, we've, my only point is, we've already started to align some of our strategies using this map as the backdrop. The adoption of the CHSP process that we amended, that includes, you know, roughly five, almost $600,000 in it, uses this as the framework for where that will take place.
Yeah. I think maybe there's two issues. One is the issue of adopting a map that we will consider the South Side, and the other issue is the ULI report and implementing the recommendations of the ULI. Or do we, at this point now, want to ignore?
No.
You get with the city manager and come back with the regular judge.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe what that is then is, ULI, again, is a smaller subset of what is the larger.
Right.
And I think there is, I mean, we commissioned the report, there's some commitment, you know, toward that. But I do think, as we talk about a general approach, and I think it's important staff know what we mean by this as well, because they're the ones that are helping to execute this, that we're talking about a larger area that is more indicative of, I think, the crises that we're trying to get at, which is reflected in the motion. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager, is there anything further while we're here?
No, sir.
All right. I want to thank again the staff for your hard work. We appreciate you all being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.